I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Monday, November 3, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I am presiding over this meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. I'll start roll call with Council Vice President Forsythe.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Native American History Month. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas National Native American Heritage Month is observed across the United States each November to recognize the rich histories, vibrant cultures, and enduring contributions of the many tribal nations and indigenous peoples who are the original inhabitants of this land and whose descendants continue to shape and strengthen our communities and nations. And whereas the movement to formally recognize Native American heritage began over a century ago with the first state sanctioned American Indian Day declared on May 6, 1916 in New York, national awareness grew in 1976 when President Gerald Ford proclaimed the first Native American Awareness Week. In 1990, President H.W. Bush signed a joint resolution into law establishing November as National Native American Heritage Month, ensuring this essential recognition would become part of our national fabric. And whereas Native Americans have demonstrated extraordinary service, sacrifice, and strength throughout our history, including 44,000 Native men and women who served during World War II, among them Navajo, Cherokee, Comanche, Choctaw, code talkers who used their indigenous languages to transmit unbreakable battlefield communications, contributions that were instrumental to Allied victory, and remain a symbol of resilience and patriotism. And whereas Native communities continue to thrive, innovate, and lead in fields such as environmental stewardship, public policy, science, the arts, education, and more, indigenous knowledge systems have long promoted sustainability, community wellness, and a deep respect for the natural world. Native peoples remain steadfast in their efforts to protect their sovereignty, preserve their cultures, and advocate for justice and equity. And whereas the city of Redmond honors the enduring relationship between tribal nations and this land and recognizes that understanding and acknowledging the past and present injustices is essential to building a future rooted in mutual respect, shared prosperity, and true partnership. Now therefore, I, Vanessa Kritzer, on behalf of Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, do proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month. The next item on the agenda was scheduled to be a presentation on Cascadia's State of the College, but this item is being moved to an upcoming meeting. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on the crisis care levy provided by representatives from King County's Department of Community and Human Services. So we'll invite up Susan McLaughlin, the Director of King County Behavioral Health Recovery Division, and Jennifer Winslow, Crisis Care Center Strategic Planning Manager. Welcome, and hopefully we've got your presentation up. Go ahead.
Is this on? Yes. Good evening. Thank you so much. For the record, my name's Susan McLaughlin, the Director of the Behavioral Health and Recovery Division at King County. We're so excited and grateful to be here tonight to give you an update on King County's Crisis Care Center levy. Just as a reminder, this was a voter-approved levy. It was approved back in April of 2023. It's a $1.2 billion levy for the next nine years to transform our crisis system. Let's see if I can figure out. So this is our vision of a crisis continuum for here in King County. It includes someone to call or contact, and that's our 988 Crisis Response Line, someone to respond, and we have expanded our mobile crisis response teams, which I'll talk about in a minute, a safe place for people to go when they're experiencing a mental health or substance use disorder crisis. And that is the paramount purpose of the levy, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then someone to follow up after a crisis, because we know that a crisis is a point in time. But what happens after is really important to engage individuals in treatment and get them the ongoing care that they need. So the Crisis Care Levy itself has a paramount purpose, which is to build a network of five crisis care centers throughout, distributed geographically across King County. One of those crisis care centers will be dedicated specifically to youth under the age of 18. And Jennifer's going to talk a lot more about our crisis care centers in a minute. But there are two supporting purposes to the levy as well that we are making investments in. The first is to build back the 115 residential treatment beds that we have lost in King County since 2018. And the second is to strengthen and diversify our behavioral health workforce so that we have enough people to care for all of the people in need in King County. And we'll talk a little bit about the investments we've made to date there. So because we knew it was going to take a little bit of time to stand up five crisis care centers, one of the things in the levy for the first year was to make what we call early investments to support people, because people are in crisis today, right now. And so some of those investments are listed on the slide here. The first is that we have expanded our mobile crisis response teams for both adults and children across the region. We now have two providers that operate these mobile response teams. Sound Health Solutions, which has teams in North, East, and South King County, and then Downtown Emergency Services, services people in the central King County area. And I just will call out a couple of things that are east, some of our east side crisis, mobile crisis response teams are actually stationed here in Redmond and are dispatched out of the Together Center in Redmond, and they have mobile vans there as well. And to date, or January through September of 2025, the teams have conducted 93 adult outreaches for residents of the Redmond area. So we've seen a significant increase in the use of mobile crisis response, and that has been wonderful. We also have a diversion, a 988-911 diversion project that we have been working on. This is in partnership with Crisis Connections, which is the 988 Call Center in King County. They are partnering with ValleyCom, which is one of the public service 911 call centers. And the goal here is that when calls come into 911, they work with Crisis Connections to divert those calls. If they are a mental health or a substance use crisis call, divert to the behavioral health system, and our mobile crisis teams respond to those calls instead. And they've had a wonderful success in that diversion, and we're looking to expand that to other 911 call centers in the region eventually. We've invested to date over $15 million in six facilities to preserve existing residential treatment beds, to do renovations, upgrades, and so forth, to make sure we don't lose any more beds. And then coming forward will be this year, this coming year in 2026, awarding capital funds to start to build back those 115 beds. And then to date, we've also made close to $17 million investment in our workforce. We have funded 37 community behavioral health providers to support retention and sustainability of the current workforce. We also have a partnership with SEIU 1199 Training Fund for a Behavioral Health Apprenticeship Program. That's pulling more people into the behavioral health workforce. And coming up in 2026, we're going to be developing a curriculum and a crisis training academy so that we can ensure all of the workforce from our call centers to our mobile teams to the crisis care centers themselves have the most up-to-date best practice training for crisis response. So that's a little bit about our early investments. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer now, who's going to talk specifically about our crisis care centers.
All right. Thank you, Susan. So for the record, Jennifer Winslow, Strategic Planning Manager. So as Susan described, there is a paramount purpose, and that is the establishment of five crisis care centers. So what is a crisis care center? A crisis care center is a place that anyone can go to receive immediate supports related to mental health and/or substance use, whether that be drug or alcohol use disorders. These facilities are staffed 24/7, and you can walk in. No insurance is needed. So to describe a little more about what a crisis care center is, there are three components to a center. There are the Behavior Health Urgent Care, the 23-Hour Observation, and then the Crisis Stabilization Unit. So when we think about the Behavior Health Urgent Care, it operates very similar to how a regular physical health urgent care would operate. So individuals that are presenting in this urgent care may be presenting with kind of low-level symptoms such as mild depression and/or anxiety, and oftentimes what we may find is that a person may be experiencing some level of distress but can't quite name what that is. And so they're able to walk in and just be triaged and be assessed. Staff there will be able to help determine what is going on and then what is the best resource. We like to describe the urgent care as the no-wrong door, which means that anyone can walk in with a presenting problem, and staff there will work to identify what's in kind of the best interest of that individual. What we've actually found is about 80% of individuals who walk in through the urgent care will get their needs met. So from there, they'll be able to be discharged and kind of resume their daily activities. And I'll talk a little bit more about discharge planning here in a second. However, there may be some individuals that may be presenting with a higher level of acuity, and that's where the 23-Hour Observation Unit comes in. The 23-Hour Observation Unit also serves as that front door or that landing zone for first responders. So as Susan kind of described with that continuum, one of the gaps within our system is that there has not been a place for folks to go. Oftentimes, people find themselves either in the ED or in the jail, which are two places that just aren't necessarily the best for a person in crisis. So this 23-Hour Observation, again, is that landing zone for individuals to be able to come in. 23-Hour Observation operates very similar to what a psychiatric ED would provide. This is also the place where if a person needs a higher level of care, perhaps from a designated crisis responder, this is also where that individual may be evaluated as well. So within the 23-Hour Observation, a person can stay for 23 hours and 59 minutes, and from there, a person may have their needs met and be discharged. However, for some, they may need just a few more days of stabilization, and that's when we move to the stabilization unit, which is a 16-bed licensed residential treatment setting. And here, individuals will work on social skills, supports, there may be group therapy, working again on that discharge plan. This unit will also be duly licensed for individuals who are experiencing withdrawal management as well, so this unit will serve that as well. So throughout these three units that I've kind of described, all roads though lead to discharge. Discharge starts at the time of intake. So the moment a person walks through the door, staff will be working with that individual to understand a little bit about their history. Where are you from? Are you connected with any sorts of natural support, family, friends? Are you currently connected with the behavioral health organization? How can we help create a discharge plan that is going to be individualized for that person, which may be very different than someone else? For those that do not have discharge options, there are funding available to support what we call post-crisis follow-up. These are teams that will be located within each of the centers. This team will be comprised of a nurse, peer support, as well as perhaps a social worker of some kind. And this team can actually follow someone for up to 90 days and help them really get connected to resources, getting them established with perhaps a behavioral health organization, helping get them to appointments, perhaps help with medication compliance. And so again, the goal really is when a person leaves a center, they'll be able to have a discharge plan that is again individualized for their needs. Excellent. So as mentioned, there will be five centers. This slide right here describes the geographical distribution of those crisis care centers. As you may see, that there are four regions, North, East, South, and Central. It's important to note that crisis response zones do not restrict access to anyone in a crisis. So I always like to use the example, I live in the South End, but if I'm experiencing a crisis, perhaps in Kirkland, I would be able to utilize the center in the North End. And each crisis response zone will host at least one crisis care center, with that fifth center dedicated specifically to youth. One piece that I forgot to mention within a crisis care center is youth will be able to be seen in that Behavior Health Urgent Care component. So anyone will be able to be seen in that first area. So where are we at? We currently have a crisis care center in the North, that is Connections Kirkland. Central, we are looking to have one open by the end of 2027. We will be selecting an operator for the South Crisis Care Center. And then as it relates to both the East and the youth, we will be opening requests for proposals to select those operators and potential sites here in actually the coming weeks. Excellent. So let's talk a little bit about Connections. So Kirkland Connections is now the first crisis care center here in King County. The most exciting thing about Connections is they are now serving youth. They recently opened their youth urgent care as of October 1st. We are seeing a growing number of individuals that are utilizing the Kirkland Center at this time. What we're finding is that about 50% of individuals are self-referral, or they're doing that walk-in. And then again, about 40% we're seeing are coming from those first responders through that immediate drop-off point. First responders take that drop-off takes about less than 10 minutes, and this is very intentional. We know that first responders have a job, they want to get in, drop off, and then be able to get out and serve and help other individuals. And then as it relates to local police departments, we currently have 12 police departments, including Redmond, that are utilizing the center. Great.
So I was going to take this one, just to mention that in addition to crisis services, the Behavior Health and Recovery Division also oversees a whole host of behavioral health services, both mental health and substance use disorder treatment services. And we wanted to highlight that a number of those services are in the Redmond area. We have next-day appointments available for youth at Youth East Side Services. These are appointments that can be accessed through the 988 Call Center, and it helps accelerate access to a clinician and the establishment of outpatient care. We have walk-in medication appointments available through Health Point and also through Redmond Family Services, where people can walk in and get appointments to get medication for opiate use disorder or other medications that they might need. Substance use disorder services are available at ICRON in the area. There's a mental health residential treatment facility at Stillwater here. And then of course, the range of crisis services that we've been talking about that are available throughout the county. Go ahead.
All right. So what is next? So as mentioned, we will be releasing that request for proposals for the crisis care centers in both the East and the East Crisis Response Zone, as well as a request for proposals for that youth crisis care center that can be located in any of those four crisis response zones. We are also looking for East King County jurisdictions that may be interested in hosting a crisis care center. And I'll talk a little bit in a second about how we can develop those partnerships, as well as those post-crisis follow-up teams that I described that happened at discharge. Those teams will launch in 2026. And then one of the requirements as outlined in the Crisis Care Implementation Plan is an annual report. And we actually released our first annual report August 15 of 2025 that describes the activities of the levy within 2024. Most of those, as Susan had mentioned, were really centered around early crisis investments as well as just qualitative data as we were really getting the levy up and going. Coming soon though, our next report will be released in August of 2026 that will describe all of the activities within 2025. And as we continue to bring more crisis care centers online, as well as just having investments within the levy, this data dashboard will really be able to explain just where dollars are going and how the levy is being effective. Excellent. So as mentioned, how can we as DCHS partner with those jurisdictions that may be interested in hosting a crisis care center? DCHS, in partnership with Sound Cities Association, will be hosting a What Jurisdictions Need to Know meeting on November 17. This meeting is for jurisdictional reps, so individuals like city managers that may be interested in just learning what does it take for a jurisdiction to cite a crisis care center, as there are requirements related to permitting, zoning, things of that nature. So this will be happening on the 17th. Additionally, we want to hear from community. Community was a crucial part in the development of the implementation plan. We really want to center community voice, and particularly voices that have not historically had a voice, to be able to speak to resources. So we are always looking to provide opportunities to come to community events as well as partner with any sort of opportunity. One of the highlights, we actually partnered with NAMI earlier this year, and we hosted a community event. We had about 90 participants, and that meeting was actually held in Spanish, which was really cool. We were able to provide translation services. We actually have a staff member who was able to speak Spanish. And then we were also able to compensate individuals for their time in terms of providing input around what is a crisis care center and what would they like to see at a crisis care center as they may be utilizing a crisis care center. And that did happen in Redmond, yes. Awesome. And with that, we will now open it up. I believe we have a few minutes for questions. But here, we're just kind of highlighting some of those resources that Susan had described around what is available.
Well, thank you so much for the wonderful presentation and for the amazing work that you're doing, not only to serve Redmond residents, but those all across King County. And thank you to the voters for approving this levy so we can fund all of this really important work and spaces. I will open up questions from the council. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I had a question from a resident regarding the federal funding being pulled for LGBTQ youth, and I'm curious if that is part of the 988-911 diversion project that you'd mentioned, or how that will be incorporated.
So yes, definitely, in terms of the 988. 988 is a national call line and a national effort for crisis response. And there was a specific, within the 988 lines, there was a specific line dedicated to the LGBTQIA+ population. That line has been terminated, but that's not to say that folks from that population can't call the 988 line. There are still trained, certainly at our call center, trained people on the other end of that line that are able to really provide a culturally responsive response to that population and then attempt to link them to specialty services within the region.
And that connects with the crisis care centers as well, is that correct?
Uh...
Would they get a referral to...
They could get a referral, yes, to the crisis care centers, for sure.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, sorry. Continuing on this theme of federal government, there is an emerging federal program, I think the pilot might be in Utah, where involuntary commitment is part of that. Do you have very strong policies around the idea of not having involuntary commitment as part of this?
Yeah, so Washington State has laws about involuntary commitments, called the Involuntary Treatment Act. And that law designates a certain classification of positions that are the only people in Washington State who can commit somebody involuntarily and withdraw their rights to treatment. Our value and philosophy for the crisis care centers and generally our approach to all of the behavioral health services is the least restrictive response as possible. So ITA involuntary treatment is really a last resort. And at the crisis care centers, it's all voluntary. If at the 23-Hour Observation or on a crisis stabilization unit, one of the physicians or trained staff assesses that a person meets criteria for an involuntary commitment, they can call the designated crisis responders, who will come out to the crisis care center and do the evaluation. If the person is evaluated and detained under that law, they will be moved to what's called an evaluation and treatment facility, because those are the only facilities that can hold people under an ITA. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming and presenting and letting us know where things stand and what we can be looking forward to. As we navigate mental health awareness situations, and we are having more and more just frank conversations about it, I know that there's a decrease in unintentional consequences of seeking help, where not too long ago, if you sought help for some mild depression, there may be some unintentional consequences upwards to involuntary confinement or separation. What measures are taking place to avoid that and also to de-stigmatize? Because we're talking about something that's pretty radical, an urgent mental care crisis, where even some symptoms that will impact or many of us will experience. And we're talking about dealing with depression, dealing with anxiety, anybody who's been alive for any length of time, we're dealing with it because of the world that we live in now. So unintentional consequences, how are we avoiding them? And how else are we taking strides to de-stigmatize so that we can take care of our mental health?
Yeah. Do you have any... Okay. So thank you for that question. I mean, stigma itself is probably the most significant contributor to people not accessing the help that they need. And so we are doing a lot of work to get the word out about what services are available and also to normalize, you know, mental wellness and well-being. I think we, it'd be hard pressed to guess that most of the people in this room either themselves or have had a family member who has struggled with mental health or substance use disorders. One of the things that, with the crisis care centers and also a lot of the services we provide, is hiring staff that are peer support counselors. These are individuals with lived experience of mental health or substance use and have been on their own journey of recovery and are now in a position to give back and to share their stories and help engage individuals to see that actually people can and do recover and treatment works. And that's a really important part of this, and I think the more we elevate that that's actually the fact and the truth, that we know that treatment works, and making that more available and letting people know. We've been running bus ads as well with this picture that you see on here to just get the word out about what is available to folks. In terms of the continuum of care, again, I think our value has always been and continues to be least restrictive care. And the Washington State laws are pretty strict around involuntary commitment, so it's only at the point that somebody meets that criteria for being a danger to self, danger to others, or so gravely disabled that they can't make decisions, that they're making decisions that might be threatening their lives, that is the threshold for involuntary treatment. And so that's really a last resort for that. What do you want to add?
Yes, just to kind of amplify, how do we work to, on this kind of the stigma, a big part of this is just around community engagement. You know, Susan and I, we can do presentations all day long. However, it's not as effective if it's coming from individuals within one's own community. So for us, we're really trying to make investments within community engagement, to identify members, trusted leaders amongst the community that also understand, that can then go into their communities and have these conversations and talk about what is mental health. I think just being candid and being very honest, the fact that the voters approve this says that everyone is impacted by this in some sort of way. And so by making investments within communities, communities then are able to also help to do the work. And that is how we really spread the work around just what a crisis care center is.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you both so much for being here. This has been really helpful. Next week at the council, we're going to have a study session and begin to evaluate some of the enhancements we made to our budget last year. And that included a few staff positions, that now we're at this point where we may not need to hire those positions because of the great work going on, especially with the mobile crisis response teams. But that is a decision that's kind of in front of us. So I want to ask just like two clarifying questions that I think would be helpful. Is it your understanding that your mobile crisis response teams, who are based here at Sound, is it your understanding that our dispatchers are sending calls to them? And the second question is, is your mobile response team coresponding with officers, or are they on their own?
Yeah, so the mobile rapid response teams do not corespond with law enforcement. They respond on their own. And sometimes they will coordinate with co-response units. The thing about the coresponders is they, because it's the 911 system and they're attached to law enforcement, they can often get there faster than a mobile crisis response team. I think that on average across the county, they're averaging about 20 to 30 minutes in terms of a response time to get to the point of crisis. So that was one, that's one thing to note with that. In terms of the dispatch, all dispatch happens through the 988 Call Center. So if somebody calls 988, and again, there might be a handoff from the 911 dispatch to 988 through some of the coordination that's going on with Crisis Connections, but Crisis Connections is the dispatcher. So they will triage that call. A person can ask for a mobile crisis response, and then they will dispatch the appropriate team, and that is closest to the location of where the person is experiencing the crisis. Thank you so much. And also just for the...
And also, just for the listening public who is really interested in this topic, we also did fulfill the MHP position that has been vacant for a while, so we do have that response, co-response happening in the department. Okay, thank you. This has been really helpful. Appreciate it.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. My colleagues asked a lot of the questions that I had in mind, so I appreciate them for that, but just wanted to say thank you for being here and presenting to our community. I had the great fortune of touring the facility before it opened, and it was absolutely beautiful and very fantastic, and it's great to hear all the work that you've been able to accomplish in the last year. So I just wanted to say thank you and thank you to presenting to the community because we need more people to know about the crisis care center, so appreciate you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Recently, I was able to tour the Garage Teen Cafe down in Issaquah to do a bit of research on how they're supporting their teen community. They are currently seeing about 100 teens coming in every day, just under 500 unique users throughout the year, and they have two mental health professionals on staff, looking to see how, because of the numbers are so high in this particular teen center, is there conversations about collaboration or being a resource, you know, because they are, these two professionals are being of service to 100, access to 100 teens per day? Is there collaboration or partnership looking for teen centers of that scale?
So I would say that the youth mental health crisis is our next big crisis in this region and in our country. Our youth are really in trouble. There is not enough youth mental health and substance use treatment providers right now. It's a high priority. We don't have a workforce trained, so we are, within the King County Integrated Care Network, we have a number of providers that serve children and youth and provide support services. I'm not sure that the garage is part of that. I know, I think that we are funding them through our local sales tax funding for some of their, some of the services that they provide. But I think it's a great opportunity, and they can reach out directly to us, any provider can, if they want to get more connected into the crisis response system to refer youth. We do have specialized youth mobile response teams, and so that would be a good connection to have. And then obviously, at the point we have our youth crisis care center stood up, I think that will be a really important resource for youth providers as well, as we continue to make investments in a workforce that can really serve the youth.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation and for answering our many questions. I think a lot of mine were asked by my colleagues, and so just want to thank you very much. And I will also ask if you can send us a copy of your presentation. I think councilmembers and the public would love to see it. We can get it posted along with the agenda from today, so that way the public can access all of this great information as well. And encourage you to send along anything that our communications team can send out to better disseminate all the information about the resources, especially since the first crisis care center is right in our neighboring city. So really wonderful to have that resource, and thank you so much for the work.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. It's been a pleasure.
The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers will generally not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW42.17a.555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are nine people signed up to speak tonight, and written comment has been distributed to the council, and two people have signed up to speak remotely. We will start with Daniel Dawson, then Aaron Hamilton, then Wolf Adriatico. Daniel, come on up. You have three minutes to address the council. Go ahead.
Hello, city council members. My name is Daniel Dawson. I graduated from Oregon State University with a bachelor's in computer science, and my area of study was focused on computer security. I've worked across the tech sector from call center tech support to IT systems administration as well as software engineering. My opinions expressed herein are wholly my own as a resident of Redmond, and these opinions do not reflect the opinion of my employer or any other of my affiliates. I want to raise concerns about citywide camera systems. This includes camera systems like fixed long-term license plate readers. I request that any plans or operations deploying any citywide camera systems be placed on hold and the public be solicited for further comment before proceeding. The core concern I have with the collection of population scale location data without the consent of population is that Redmond incurs a liability for massing all of this information into one place, making it a treasure trove for hackers or other bad actors to seek out. Companies often make claims about their superior security and confidentiality, but complex hardware and software systems make absolute security nearly impossible. Companies claim to take the utmost security measures but often fail really hard. Take, for example, Equifax. In 2017, despite claims of security and confidentiality, Equifax leaked the names, phone numbers, home addresses, and social security numbers of nearly 150 million people. They were unable to match the claims of security that they purported. A more recent example, Telemessage. This year, Telemessage had federal contracts to archive messages for government agencies. On this list of customers was even the Trump White House. Despite their claims of security, their system administrators accidentally left the door wide open to hackers when they set up their servers. As a result, Whitehack or Good Kai hackers were able to obtain unencrypted messages of various Telemessage customers. Even the big tech companies can't claim absolute security. Just this year, Apple patched a vulnerability which let hackers send a victim a specially-designed picture over text message. The victim didn't even have to pick up their phone, just receiving the message was enough to give hackers control over their phone. The point here is that companies aren't perfect. There will be a vulnerability. The question is not if, the question is when. If we consider a small business that puts up a camera system to cover their storefront, they're going to collect the private information about the comings and goings of their employees, of customers, and their neighbors. But if a city puts up a camera system, they're going to collect the comings and goings of all residents and all visitors. When the small business gets hacked, the liability is small because the scope of the data is very localized to that one location. When the city is hacked, a liability is massive because of the scope of the scale and the scope and scale of the data affects everyone. Please do not install citywide cameras. Despite what companies say, they cannot confidently secure the kind of data that they're collecting. The liability of creating this treasure trove for hackers is just too great. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Aaron Hamilton, followed by Wolf Adriatico, followed by David Morton.
So I have to take a couple of seconds about that other presentation, which I already spoke to her fairly quick, for a little bit, but everything that they said in that statement isn't actually reality. I have extensive experience with working with 988 as a user, as a person who suffers with suicide and mental health. Everything that she was saying does not actually happen. So this is not a good alternative for the mental health officers that we finally hired on, who is awesome, because I am the living proof of that program actually working. Suzie, who did the pilot, literally saved my life, and 988 has never done anything to help me. So just wanted to bring that up, that that's really cool, and they should strive for that, but that's not reality right now. And we get to talk more, actually, because she's really interested in hearing that. So just wanted to make that, now that I just wasted a bunch of time, I'm not going to be able to actually do what I actually wanted to do. This is about Chief Lowe and all the nonsense from last time, you know, kicking me out of the seat program because theoretically I don't align with the mission, vision, and values. The mission is every single interaction matters, positive or negative, learn from others, share our experiences, inspire change, influence actions with RBD, and create more, blah, 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 blah. But that only applies to people of faith. He talked a lot about respect. Respect is earned, not given. At the beginning, I was very respectful, extending an olive branch, wanting to rebuild trust, asking for meetings, but your persistent refusal to listen, take initiative, or be respectful on any level has deteriorated the relationship to nothing. Every time I've brought up anything about LGBTQ+, you've been argumentative, aggressive, controlling, and confrontational. I remember at a seat meeting, I was trying to tell you that our department's failure to act against anti-trans hate, harassment, and violence, that you were forcing us to take action into our own hands. And your response to me was, well, if you do that, we'll look at you as a suspect. Your consultant also wanted to push, get back into that and push me into the point, into the corner. I got to the point where I had to excuse myself from the meeting to actually cry because I was so shocked that the person hired to protect the people would act like that. Did this interaction align with the group's mission or values? And that's a no. But speaking of values, one of the values is diversity, and I was the only trans person in the group, so much for that. The diverse background and experience I brought to the group, you rarely see in just one person. I'm not only a member of the trans community, but a survivor and advocate of suicide, sexual assault, molestation, physical and psychological abuse. I've struggled with mental health and a living proof that the MHP program works.
Any conclusion?
I rely on the affordable housing and finances, blah, 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 blah. Shit, I've died and...
Your time is up, Aaron. The next person to speak is Wolf Adriatico, followed by David Morton, followed by David Go ahead.
As an individual with no political power, nothing I do tips the scales of national, state, county, or city politics. What I can do is contribute to my community and support the people I love. The Old Firehouse is where I found family, after all. We've refrained from calling that community shattered or broken, yet so often, those around me cry, threaten suicide, vent their frustration and despair, as they're exposed to death, abuse, decline in human artwork, the breakdown of the federal government, all the while being betrayed by their sworn protectors and representatives who instead abuse their power over the powerless. All I can do is be there for my found family and try to encourage them, despite knowing how unlikely reaching the end of the tunnel really is. In the background, I write letters to council members, I engage in fruitless politics and a pipe dream to uproot corruption. I burden a leadership role I am not equipped for. My mental health is destroyed, repeated abuse and apathy by those in power, even attempts to involuntarily commit me. You have shown no respect for us and condescend us even now. Trust and respect, those are earned. You and your staff smirking put me and my peers through hell. Thank you.
Next up is David Morton, followed by David Combs, followed by Christina Wayland. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members and mayor pro tem. I'm David Morton. I'd like to provide feedback on the draft 2025 ESAP. First, I want to commend the city staff and Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee for their extensive community engagement, including tabling events, partnerships, and newsletter subscriptions, all of which strengthens Redmond's collective climate action. The plan's five big moves provides a clear framework for reducing emissions 50% by 2030 and 95% by 2050. The emphasis on existing buildings, which generate 70% of Redmond's emissions, is encouraging. The Energy Smart Eastside program supported 525 heat pump installations in 2024, but it needs to reach 625 annually by 2030. This ambitious target requires sustained funding and aggressive outreach. The plan's equity focus, which prioritizes vulnerable and underserved communities in the clean energy transition, is appreciated. However, we'd like to see more specific implementation details. How will equity outcomes be measured? What percentage of Energy Smart Eastside resources will serve low-income households and communities of color? The transportation strategies align well with Redmond's new light rail stations, but it's concerning that only 9% of registered vehicles in Redmond are battery-electric. Reaching 30% by 2030 will require significantly expanding charging infrastructure, especially at existing multifamily properties where residents often lack home charging options. I strongly support Action 2.6 to identify and grid capacity gaps and implement solutions by 2026. Inadequate electrical infrastructure could bottleneck Redmond's entire decarbonization effort. Action 2.6 can enable building electrification and EV charging expansion. The timeline for city operations' carbon neutrality is concerning. The 2020 climate emergency declaration is committed to net zero by 2030, but that goal won't be fully met due to expense and capacity constraints. So there needs to be a revised concrete timeline with identified funding sources. Finally, Big Move Five's resilience focus is critical. Redmond has experienced some recent hot summers, so establishing resilience hubs and emergency alert systems by 2026 should be priorities. This plan is a strong foundation for climate action. It can be stronger with equity metrics and accelerated implementation of the most urgent actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Combs, followed by Christina Wayland, followed by Faith2386. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm here to request that the Automated License Plate Recognition System, also known as FLOC, be dismantled in Redmond immediately in the interest of protecting our citizens from illegal surveillance by federal agencies. You, as a council, have the honor, the privilege, and the duty to protect the citizens of Redmond from targeted attacks aimed at disappearing citizens from our country based on specific identifying characteristics and demographics. The FLOC system is a citizen tracking tool, plain and simple. In your interview with Redmond Police Chief Lowe at the last technology update, Chief Lowe acknowledged that his agency had recently discovered that the Redmond FLOC system had been left open to two out-of-state agencies, and he referenced only one instance in which the FLOC system had actually been used to track a criminal. He also stated that they were still working on finding and arresting this individual. So how is the risk of using this system worth it? But most concerning, he did not address the question of whether FLOC data can be subpoenaed by a court. I asked this question to his public information officer over a week and a half ago, and I still haven't received a response or even an acknowledgement of my request. Police Chief Lowe asks us to just trust him. He implies that policies are in place, even though they have not completely worked up to now, that will somehow keep our citizens safe from unauthorized access to surveillance data. Councilmembers, this isn't an issue to be discussed and further analyzed. It is the time to stop politely asking the Redmond Police Department to protect our data. It is time to perform your duty and protect Redmond's citizens. Shut down FLOC now. I ask you this, how would you like to be remembered in history? Would you like to be remembered for doing the right thing to protect your citizens? Or would you like to be remembered for doing nothing? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christina Wayland, followed by Faith2386, followed by Juliana Penya. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Christina Wayland. I am a commissioner on the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission, but I am not acting as a representative of that commission. I was a member of the Old Firehouse Teen Center Facility Recommendation Stakeholder Group, but I am not acting as a representative of that group. I am speaking today simply representing myself. During next week's study session, you will be presented with the Stakeholder Group final report, which is already available online. I am here to speak in support of that report. The stakeholder group process we went through in creating a recommendation for you as a council was an open sharing of ideas in small and large groups with modifications made to the format, the process, and the wording in response to the group's needs, their wants, and their opinions. to the group's needs, their wants, and their opinions. We spent two of our six meetings discussing the wording of the recommendation itself. It is hard to capture the essence of 24 different sets of opinions. That is why you have been given the discussion topics and all of the other documentation to give our recommendation just a bit of the nuance that we expressed during our meetings together. I believe the Stakeholder Group final report is an accurate reflection of the group's conclusion. It boils down to, the majority of the stakeholder group recommends rebuilding the teen center at its current location. I am here to support the recommendation. And I am here to tell you that the process of creating this final report had merit. The recommendation itself has merit. And you should give the work of this volunteer group significant weight when making your decision about the Old Firehouse building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Faith 2386, followed by Juliana Peña, followed by Reren. Go ahead.
Hi, I have a bit of a story for y'all. So here's a fun thing that I realized when I was at the focus group that happened about a month ago, the second of the two. I attended both. When we were going over and were like having notes written about like what we wanted or what we thought teens wanted out of a teen space, one thing that, it was a kind of like offhand mention, well, not really an offhand mention, but it was mentioned was talking about like how there was like a kitchen space in the, at the Old Firehouse. And I, I had kind of a strong reaction like emotionally to that because it made me realize something like really, really interesting. I, to give background, I, I had a lot of mental health problems in like middle school-ish. I was constantly having stress migraines that made it impossible for me to go through even a day of being at that school. And I ended up dropping out and I ended up going to another school that was significantly better helped enable, by giving me a like separate space to like just generally live outside of like being home and having like, like spaces for like, to like just do things on like in a more self-directed way. That was amazing for me. I won't get too far into that. I don't want to preach about the school that I went to because it's a bit of a thing. But the, let me go by my notes. That, that saved my life in a lot of ways. I was able to actually like figure out who the heck I was. I was able to actually just like feel at home in my own skin. And it was amazing for me. The, the point of it is like having true third spaces, third spaces to do, to, to live, a home away from home is incredibly vital, not just a hangout space, a fully encompassing space for someone to feel like they're at home in. I've spoken to a lot of people that are now good friends of mine through this movement who said that the Old Firehouse was like, like a home away from home and the place, and the first place that they felt like truly seen as themselves. And I, I just think that is an absolutely vital thing for the mental health of a community, especially because like for teens especially, it's really, really hard to find spaces like that. It, and the thing that's frustrating me so much about how this whole process has gone is that it really reminds me of COVID in a lot of ways, where just the small amount of time where everything has been closed down, a lot of institutional knowledge and eldership among the teens has been lost because those teens are aging out of the system and are no longer going to be going. And so it's, it's baffling to me that it's like a manufactured, it's, it's, it's a manufactured, like that break time that there was in COVID was awful for a lot of people. And the fact that it's basically being manufactured in this way by council, by, for shutting us down for a certain amount of time is really, it's incredibly frustrating to me because I know how much it's hurt me and a lot of my friends.
Thank you. Next up is, is Juliana Peña.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Juliana Peña. I was born in Colombia, South America. I have lived in Redmond for over 10 years now, and since two years ago, I am a U.S. citizen. I have been dismayed this past year to see ICE aggressively arresting and deporting immigrants with no criminal records. I have been particularly alarmed to see that ICE is not following legal procedures, in some cases even arresting and deporting citizens and legal residents, and performing raids, all based on racial profiling. Just today in Redmond, ICE agents appeared in unmarked cars on Avondale Road where one of our residents was taken from his vehicle. What is the city of Redmond doing to protect our neighbors from this illegal and violent overreach of the federal government? Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana. Next up is Reren.
Thank you, council. Thank you for this evening, hearing my comments. I sit on the ESAP committee and have participated in that process. I love that our new draft report refines our focus. It continues the work that we've set out to accomplish while also pivoting on the new challenges that are arising in the years ahead. It's wonderful to see the progress we have accomplished, and it gives me great hope in that sense. And then it also brings awareness to the risks already here that we faced and that are becoming more prominent. The resiliency focus for the city as well and as, and for community members will be invaluable. Building code efficiency will be essential, so I look forward to your, your progress in those areas where we can move the needle in removing waste or capturing energy reduction. These are excellent next step focuses and high priority targets within the draft. In addition, I'll be urging battery backup and energy capture where possible, especially for essential operations of the city and in the community, as well as continuing to urge market volatility price resiliency, especially for community members in the years ahead who may fall into crisis with rising prices. In addition, just wanted to also make a comment regarding ICE activity in our area. It's very concerning to see the mass and the inaccurate identification labeling themselves as police when they are actually more likely ICE, DHS, or Border Control. And that sort of activity creates a great deal of fear and uncertainty among community members, both immigrant and resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to our online testimony. We have two people signed up to speak remotely. Let me know when they're ready. The first is Max Roman. Hi, Max. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
You have three minutes to address the council. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. The organization of the city of Redmond, as you are all aware, is a strong mayor, weak council form of government. The structure of a government affects behavior and explains how governments perform. RCW 35A 12100 grants the mayor complete authority over all departments and employees. The chief operating officer, for example, is appointed at the discretion of the mayor and subject to removal in the same way by the mayor. And she and all of the employees appointed by the mayor are only accountable to the mayor. The council has no power over the actual execution of the policies they pass. And even with the problematic framework of a strong mayor, weak council government, councils still do hold power over legislation. The separation of powers is meant to prevent domination of the government by a single individual. Additionally, checks and balances are the key to the integrity of our democracy. If these features are ignored or fail to be used, we are at the mercy of those who hold executive power. This can apply to federal government as well. The role of council in this current form of government is limited and should be pondered. In my opinion, we could take inspiration from Seattle, where the council has power to appoint a city auditor. This role is crucial for transparency and accountability, ensuring city resources are used efficiently and legally. From my perspectives, the biggest thing, or perspective, the biggest things that the city of Redmond lacks are transparency and accountability, and the creation of a position for city auditor would improve these tenants substantially. I ask that the council consider the creation of a position for city auditor in order to ensure accountability and transparency in governance. And if there is, yes, there is time. So I also absolutely agree with the issues that come from the FLOC cameras, especially with the, you know, Department of Homeland Security and ICE being over the streets, not just in Redmond, they're up in the Manhattan as well. And I urge the council to take the appropriate, appropriate action to protect the privacy of Redmond's residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ralph Liu.
Hello, call me back. I'm probably at work for a minute. Okay, bye.
I don't think we got Ralph, did we? Ralph, we tried to call you from the Redmond City Council, leaving you a message. Do, should we try one more time?
Hello, call me back. I'm probably at work for a minute. Okay, bye.
Okay, well, we will invite Ralph to send us a, a message via written comment. That brings us to the end of items from the audience, and items from the audience is now closed. Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Given the, the events that occurred today, I would request that the police chief come up and share what he can of the ICE in Redmond topic.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and thank you, Chief Lowe. As, as many of the public may know, we, our police specifically does not cooperate with ICE here in Redmond, but we do want to hear this update. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, council. So what we are aware of is that are, that were three circumstances today in which ICE detained individuals here in Redmond. One at the Bear Creek Shopping Complex, one at the Home Depot Parking Lot, and one on Avondale and Novelty Hill Road. We did receive calls from some of the family members of the first two instances. Officers were able to respond and verify that the individuals involved were, in fact, federal agents, and that was the extent of our involvement in today's incidents.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Did ICE alert the department of their presence as they're required to do?
No, they did not, and they are not required to do. It is a general practice of law enforcement agencies to notify the, obviously, local jurisdiction if you are operating in their area of responsibility. That is not occurring presently.
Okay, so not a requirement, but a, something that is expected that they do, but they're not doing?
Yes, it's, it is an expected professional courtesy and or practice, and also to prevent, you know, blue-on-blue incidents. You have other armed individuals, if officer responds or happens to see that, you know, bad things could occur. So they're, they're, that's why you typically would notify another jurisdiction if you're operating in their area of responsibility.
Okay. And there were warrants for these individuals?
So we are not apprised of, you know, what actions they're doing or why. So to my knowledge, there, I don't know if there were warrants involved with these individuals or not.
Okay. And one more question, if I could. Was any of the data from our systems used in these contacts?
Absolutely not. None of our data has been received by any outside entity.
Okay.
Thank you. And actually, one follow-up, and then I see there's, there's questions over here. Can you share about any outreach that we did to community-based organizations that serve immigrant communities as well?
Yes. So after getting knowledge of the events that occurred, I reached out to the executive, executive director of the Mexican Cultural Center and spoke with her to ensure that they were aware of the things that were going on. We had a very brief conversation, similar to other conversations we've had when, when we've met with our community-based organization groups around this type of activity.
Great, thank you. And I'll just note that I shared some of this information as well as some of our other community-based organizations as well. Councilmember, I think I saw Councilmember Noema Camina's hand up. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Appreciate the update. This was a pretty high-profile incident, set of incidents today, but it is not the first time that ICE has been in our community. We're starting to see other jurisdictions pass and consider pieces of legislation that would require better identification of these federal agents and to require their faces to not be covered. As you consider the, the kind of spectrum of what's available, Chief, are there, is there legislative action that you think could be particularly helpful from the city of Redmond at this time?
To my knowledge, I don't believe a local jurisdiction has the authority to mandate policy, protocol, or procedure for a federal agency. I can share again with this council and the community that myself and a number of other chiefs from the east side did meet with supervisory agents from Homeland Security. Just real briefly, Department of Homeland Security is the bigger entity. Homeland Security Investigations is the investigative branch. ICE is the customs and enforcement portion in peace, and a subgroup of that are the EROs or Enforcement Removal Officers. So that's kind of the structure and breakdown of it. For these particular operations, they are bringing federal agents from a number of different agencies to the different locations in which they are operating in, so they don't necessarily fall under the supervision or jurisdiction of that local group. The agents that, the supervisory agents that we met with from a local perspective do not allow agents for their particular teams or units to wear facial coverings. However, the Director of Homeland Security has authorized it, so from that perspective, they can't stop it. So kind of coming back, I don't know that we, as a local jurisdiction, have the authority to do that, but obviously we would have to defer to our legal counsel for that part.
I have one follow-up, if the chair will permit.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. We heard today that there was, the, the federal agents who were in town were labeled themselves as police, and that, of course, is not specific enough, but also could cause confusion and reputational damage to your department. Is there, is there a conversation, professional to professional, as you're at these tables, about how confusing and unhelpful that is?
Yes, that conversation was had. It can get, it, I'll say, it is as nuanced as police officers are in blue. They are generally in green, khaki, or camouflage. Not that I would expect a community to distinguish based on color, but that is the, the color palette difference between local law enforcement and federal agents. And yes, while they are not police, they are law enforcement, so it becomes, if you want to call it nuance or wordsmithing. Like I said, we were able to verify that these were, in fact, federal agents operating in our jurisdiction today.
Councilmember Noema Camina?
Thank you. Chief, so just very directly and very plainly, so while your department will not do anything to cooperate with ICE, there is also nothing that your department can do to intervene?
Correct. They, they are operating under federal, federal law and federal authority, and federal law and authority supersedes that of a local jurisdiction. So we would not be able to interfere or intervene in their particular operations.
And we've seen in other communities where it's been the community then taking it upon themselves to essentially fight back against ICE in, in their communities. So basically, what we're letting our community know is, hey, from a city perspective, we really can't do anything, and it's upon you then to stand up and fight back against ICE in our, in our communities.
I can't support or advocate for that. We are here to keep the peace. Individuals have a right to, I'll say, conduct themselves in, you know, the manner they see fit, but we cannot support or advocate for, you know, I'll say, violence or, you know, fighting against federal agents. Our role is, is to keep the peace.
But the peace has already been broken, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Lowe. I'll note, I think, Councilmember Stewart brings up a great point about about other jurisdictions that have been reviewing potential policy actions, and I'd be happy to work with our Council Vice President to be able to bring back soon to the council a discussion of some of those options, so that way, we can look at additional ways to protect our community. Just to everyone who's listening tonight, our council stands firmly with immigrants here in our community, and we will continue to explore every avenue to be able to keep our community members safe and their dignity and human rights protected. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items to be polled? Okay. If there are no items to be polled, then this is a roll call vote, starting with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 Aye. It passes seven to zero. And there are two items that I will read into the record. The first is consent item number six, AM number 25163, ordinance number 3231. An ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, amending pay plans R and RS in order to set salaries for employees covered by the RECHA bargaining unit for the year 2026, providing for the severability and establishing an effective date. And AM number 25164, ordinance number 3232, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, amending pay plans PS and SPS in order to set salaries for police support employees covered by the Teamsters Local Union, number 117, bargaining unit for the year 2026, providing for the severability and establishing an effective date. Okay. Our next item of business is Ombud's report for October. We have Councilmember Nueva Camina, and for November, we have Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Well, it has been a pretty busy month. We had some rather spicy weather that came through that resulted in several power outages across the city. PSC had remained in contact throughout both storms that came through, and power was restored relatively quickly. There's been multiple outliers of support and concern around the government shutdown and some of our community members being hungry with the discontinuation of SNAP and partnering with Hope Link. Also got a community member who reached out about concerns about gas leaf blowers and invited them to subscribe to the Sustainability e-newsletter where they can find plans, policies, regulations, as well as the Economic Development Newsletter that is going to be discussing this more in detail, so they can stay up to date with it. Another community member reached out with concerns about the Greenway along the creek that is improperly currently named Marymore Park, and brought that up so that we can get that addressed, so that will be being taken care of. And... Policing the Rainbow is a panel discussion and Q and A on the relationship between the LGBTQ+ communities and police that is being held on November 5th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Seattle University. And I had alluded to this earlier. Throughout the last time that we met, I did tour the Garage, a teen cafe in Issaquah, and learned not only about how they started, but where they took their inspiration from, which was largely from the Redmond Old Firehouse, and how they've been able to build a thriving, sustainable organization that centers around teens and teen voices. And I'll be doing more of a reporting out in detail in our next study session.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields, it's only been a few days, but go ahead.
It's only been a few days. So, two primary pieces of communication from our residents. One is a very detailed email, again, about the Flock cameras, basically calling our decision to deploy them a terrible mistake. We've heard from a number of people tonight, and the email that was, that council received is pretty much consistent with the tone of that. I have not responded to this email yet. Last week, I missed the discussion that we had about the Flock cameras, but I have not, I have since watched that meeting. And what I would suggest, again, to council leadership is that this is not an issue that we need to go back and forth between emails with Chief Low and residents. I think we really do need to take a very critical look at the potential cataclysmic collision between the, that data being available and the intent of agencies, or not even agencies, bad players, that being available to them. I tend to agree that this is a surveillance issue of the people in Redmond, and I think that we need to have a, an emergency study session or something where we actually talk about it and not exchange a lot of emails. The other was from a member of the stakeholder group, one of the youth, who wrote a, his opinion, or her, I'm sorry, her opinion, her recommendation on what we should do with the old firehouse. You all have received that email. It's a very detailed, and it's very thoughtful, and I look forward to the discussions that we will have in the next study session on the old firehouse and what we're going to do.
Thank you. Are there other items for Ombuds? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Couple visitors to my office hours last week, and did have a chance to follow up with the folks from Redmond West Little League about most, we were able to identify next steps on most of those issues. And I do apologize to my colleague here, I don't even think I filled you in on that, and we were on the same email, so I'll fill you in on that. But, but things feel like they're in motion. Lots of emails last week about preparing for this week and the crisis in food security. I just have to say that most of those emails are actually, how can our community be helpful? So, once again, the city has posted resources for how the community can support Renewal Food Bank and Hope Link, both of which are going to continue to be consistent sources of food security for our neighbors. And there's a lot more going on, and food pantry is popping up everywhere. I think on the, if I may, because we kind of used this as a free council updating time earlier in the meeting, the council president, you suggested that you and the vice president could work on bringing back potential options for legislation that could be helpful in what we're dealing with, with ICE in our community. And we didn't take like a poll of any kind to let you know that you would have our support on that, but I do welcome that, so I just wanted to respond to that. And then, most of my Ombud report is really just the many, many conversations that I've had with community members regarding public safety technologies. So, I took a look, just as Councilmember Fields was speaking, and there's actually 25 minutes of unscheduled time in FAC next week. I know that the agenda is already posted, but it's, that is a request to get more information faster to council. It's not, anyway, I suggest maybe we look at that, because we do have time still in the noticing requirements. Back when the grants were on the table, one of the things that I said was I didn't feel like we knew what the answer was because we didn't know what our community was interested in. It had, we hadn't had a conversation about public safety technology since we were talking about the body cams. Now we have the body cams, now we have the drones, now we have the new mobile command unit, now we have the Flock cameras, and I think we're getting some important feedback from our community. So I agree. Let's have a conversation and have it really soon. So, if there's action to take, we can take it really soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, I will note, the council in the past, including just starting at our council retreat this year, had said that, that we wanted to be able to continue to have conversations of how our, our council interacts with ICE in our community, and to be able to have conversations both with our police and be able to review policies. I think the question of whether we need another touch point on that was, was part of why I brought up the opportunity for us to schedule time sooner than later, especially given the activity today within our community, so... But I appreciate you asking whether...
Sure.
And I will ask councilmembers, is there a thumbs up from councilmembers for us to be able to proceed with scheduling time to be able to do that? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Clarifying question before we take that, is there anything preventing us from making a motion right now? Because we're in a special meeting?
No, you, but we can also just schedule, we don't need to make a motion. But if you'd like to make a motion, you certainly could.
Do we need to wait an additional week before we take action?
On, on the, on scheduling a meeting?
No, Councilmember Stewart was actually just letting me know that because this is a special meeting, then we cannot take action because it was not in the notice?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
We will just refer to our city attorney here.
That is correct. You can discuss it, but cannot take final action on something, something that's not on the agenda.
So then, the soonest that, for clarification, the soonest that we could take action on this would be then, next Wednesday?
In two weeks.
In two weeks.
Correct. So, the discussion, is it motion for a discussion for next week? And then you would look towards a consent meeting for, or what? I've lost track of what the motion is.
For clarification, are you talking about the Flock cameras?
Correct.
Okay, because I, I think we were discussing scheduling a time to talk about what else we could do in terms of ICE in our community, so, and having a discussion about that. If we want to talk about the Flock cameras, just to be clear for the listening public. So you're talking about whether or not we would disable the Flock cameras or make some sort of motion on that? I think the answer is that tonight, since it was not on the agenda, we would not be able to do so. We could have a, a study session, we could discuss it in a study session and put it on two weeks from now agenda, or we could call a special meeting. Would that be the case?
Correct.
Okay, great. Councilmember Anderson?
I just wanted to suggest that this gets added as an agenda item on the next upcoming meeting by council leadership.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Fields?
So, if I remember right, we can make a procedural, procedural motion to actually put it on an agenda. We don't have to make a suggestion. Someone could make a motion procedural to say, this will be added to our agenda, and council can vote on that.
Yes. Yeah, I can also...
I'm fairly certain of that.
Putting it on the agenda, should the council want to do that? So I could, we can just take a, I see a thumbs up to putting it onto the agenda. And what I would say, suggest as process is, if we want to put it on the agenda for our next business meeting to take a vote on this, then we also could put it on the Finance Administration Communications Meeting for us to have a discussion about what we want to be on that business meeting. And that way, we can take action on it. I, I'll just weigh in here that I've been listening deeply to the public and, and also thinking, and also reading the information that has been coming to light about Flock, and I do have grave concerns, and I think that we should discuss whether we want to keep the cameras on right now while we're learning more about it. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
I under, thank you, and I understand why we have grave concerns. My concern is, why do we, how can we decrease that time? Because two weeks is a long time, given what is happening. So what would we need to do to make that process quicker? Is that just as simple as then putting forth another special meeting? And which could be, how soon could that be, Ms. Mueller?
I think we could put a special meeting for next week. Would that be, would there be enough time for that? Could we update the agenda to put an item on the agenda, should the council want to take action on it? Okay, our clerk says that if it is more than 24 hours in advance, we can update the agenda. We do have a special meeting scheduled for next week, so if there is interest from the council, we could, we could, we could both schedule time on FAC, so we have some more time to discuss, and then also put an item, for example, on that special meeting. Councilmember Fields?
And I'm open to having it on FAC, for sure. We could also, I believe, tonight, as a council, make a recommendation to the mayor's office to suspend Flock. She doesn't have to do it, but we could, in fact, make that recommendation tonight as a council, which is a procedural vote.
I'll check with our city attorney to see if that's, that's doable. Let's just wait a moment. Councilmember Salahuddin?
I was going to bring up the exact same thing that Councilmember Fields brought up, and even if it's not a procedural motion, I know the police chief is here in the meeting, and we can outwardly exclaim that a suspension until we discuss the contract would be great.
I guess, here's what we'll do. For tonight, since I believe councilmembers would like to be able to say something on this topic, how about we go down the line? I'll call on each council member, and you can share whether you would like to recommend that to the, to the police chief and the mayor that until we have the chance to take a formal vote, that we'd like the cameras turned off. I will, I will pass it over to Council Vice President Forsyth first.
Thank you. I was prepared to make the motion tonight, so I am in full support of this.
Yes, I think that we can do that tonight, and I would do that tonight.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Likewise, and since I won't be a part of further conversations, would love to have that on the record as well.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I do support turning off the cameras at this time while we continue to evaluate what is both best in terms of technology, our department, and what our community wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Yes, and echoing what's already been said by my colleagues. A pause, sounds great, thanks.
Great, and I will concur with everyone else. So, it, it sounds like, and perhaps we'll just call up our police chief to come discuss this, since this is a bit unorthodox, but these are, these are unprecedented times. So, the council has recommended, we have not taken a formal vote, but you have heard feedback from the entire council that we'd like to turn the cameras off until we have the chance to have a discussion and then to take a more, a more formal decision on the future of our contract with Flock. Is that something that you're able to do?
I can look into it. As I understand it, it's not as simple as flipping a switch, but I can put the things in motion to shut the cameras off, as I understand it, from a technical perspective. We can shut off access for all of my officers. We can have that done by morning. The cameras themselves are installed, they, you know, they're a fixture. They're solar powered, so someone will physically have to touch each of the cameras to disconnect it from power during that period of time. Images will still be captured, just not accessible. So, again, as of tomorrow morning, we will start that process. I will confer with the mayor and see where, you know, where we go from here until we can have the meeting. We already have something scheduled on November 18th for a study session as a follow-up from the committee meeting last week, I believe it was. And also, in your emails, is a letter that was received today from Flock addressing the concerns that were brought up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, addressing all of those concerns to include the cancellation of the contract for any material breach. One of the comments that was made earlier in public comment, Flock, just like any other company, would be subject to court order. So I don't think that's, that's a perspective, but just like the city would be, would have to respond to a court order, Flock and any other company would as well. So I don't believe that that tips the scales, you know, the other direction, you know, from that perspective.
Great, thank you very much. And so, to be clear, no formal action has been taken, but a recommendation that's unanimous from the council has been made to the administration to turn off these cameras until we have the chance to be able to take a formal action. And I can follow up with Council Vice President Forsyth to, to work on the plans for that discussion and potential formal, formal action going forward. Do appreciate you sending along that, that letter, which... Do appreciate you sending along that letter, which was a request from council on our last touch point on this. And hopefully, we can also follow up on communication to the public, since we have received a lot of questions about that, just so that people are aware of the current status once any action is taken. And I can follow up with Mayor Bernie as well, who is out of the country, but accessible. So I will, I'll follow up with her on this. And thank you, council. Councilmember Fields?
Related question, since we have Chief Lowe. I meant to ask, when we were talking about the ICE federal agency, and you went and determined that they were, in fact, federal agents, two questions about that. One, how did you do that? Your officers said, hey, are you real?
Yeah, so one of my officers made contact with some of the agents that were, I'll say, there or involved, and verified that they were, in fact, federal agents.
So is there any legal obligation, or is it just on protocol and courtesy? Is there any legal obligation for them to identify themselves to you? In other words, if you went there and they said, yeah, get out of here, blue uniform guy, we'll do whatever we want, can you then intervene in any way? Or are they obligated to show you identification? Because there is, in fact, fraud ICE agents out there. And that is, I would think that that would be part of our responsibility to protect the public from that. So how do you know? Or how do you know every time, I guess is the real question?
So the first part of your question, yes, they could tell us, you know, go away. For us in Redmond, that has not been the case. I do also have the ability to verify, they, like other federal agents and even local agents, they do have a, like a 24-hour duty desk. So if there were to be that circumstance where we were unable to verify information in the field, we would be able to call essentially a duty desk to confirm, you know, presence or activity in the area.
So just to hammer it home one more time, if you, if you go to the field, and there's someone who's said that they were a federal agent, and they don't show you proof, you have to take their word for it until you can verify it with a 24-hour desk?
There's more details to it than that, but in the simplest of terms, we would ask for their identification, you know, again, for the general public. They may not recognize some of the more telltale signs of, you know, an actual agent or not, right? It comes down to credentialing, knowing what their badges look like, I mentioned before, understanding or knowing the color palette, you know, of uniforms, recognizing that the patches to symbolize what unit they are representing. They will have a supervisory agent there as part of it, and while you may or may not get cooperation from an agent, the supervising agent is there for that purpose, you know, and for that reason. Then you start getting into things like cars and equipment. So yes, there will be, you know, rental cars or cars with no plates, but there will also be cars there that actually have hardwired public safety equipment in it, just like a regular police car. So it's not just, they tell us yes, and we go away. There are ways that, or things we know what to look for. And then if all of that is still in question, we do have the ability to call a number and verify that activity.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Too impromptu, time's up to the dais, so thank you very much. All right, so just to recap on that, for the listening public, we just heard a confirmation from our police chief that until the council can make any formal decisions, he will be taking action to turn off the Flock cameras that are currently installed in our city. Thank you so much. And we will follow up on this, and future discussions on this will be posted publicly so that those who are interested can follow along, appreciate all the public that has weighed in on this topic. Going back to Ombuds Report, which is about public feedback, let's go to Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Most of my communications recently have been about the Flock cameras, so I very much appreciate the conversation with my colleagues. I was prepared to make that motion, forgetting that it was a special meeting, so appreciate the pivot and the good leadership on that item, so appreciate that. I had contacts about protecting insects and fallen leaves and leaving the leaves in place, more conversations about automatic license plate readers, conversations about ICE being in the community, a conversation about face covering and a potential ban, increasing the transparency and requiring visible badges and emblems, with medical exemptions, of course, for face coverings. So appreciate the conversation on that, too. And yes, council leadership will follow up on that conversation. And then I also received some information on a rapid response and accompaniment team that gives training on what to do if ICE is in your community and how to potentially bear witness to that. I will send that link out and that training out to my colleagues, and you can take that if you are interested.
Any other items for Ombuds? I think my colleagues covered a lot of the conversations I've been having as well. So, all right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. We are only doing hard things this week. I have two committee reports. The first is that the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee had a review of the rate utility study. And actually, before I get into the hard stuff, I do want to give a shout out to Haley from the finance team, did a wonderful job walking the development community through those changes, and those will be coming to council soon for our consideration as well. The hard part is, I attended the K4C, the King County Climate Collaborative, with the mayor on the 24th. I will walk through a couple of the highlights. I attended this meeting with the mayor, as well as Mica from our team. Since I joined the council, one of the things that I have always said about our relationship with PSE, given our climate goals and given where we're going, is that when PSE, if they ever get off track with meeting their goals, because our goals are so tied to their goals in delivering clean energy to us. We are electrifying everything, and we are soon going to, you know, consider and adopt an electric-first policy. Anyway, the moment came at the K4C meeting, and they are not on track, and they're not going to be on track. And that was pretty groundbreaking news. Or just maybe not earth-shattering, but certainly tough to hear. So in a very small nutshell, over the next five years, we need enough new clean power that would be able to solve the size of Oregon in terms of what we can bring on. So the good news is, 2025 is the last year of coal-fired power here in our region, but that still means we'll have a lot of natural gas energy and a lot of other stuff going on. So PSE was very clear with us about some of the things that we can do locally, including expediting permitting processes and some of the things that are common to cities. But it was a pretty hot, tough meeting. We also had a chance to hear in that meeting from Joe Fitzgibbon, the House Majority Leader, and he spoke to us about some of the legislation that he and other members of the team are preparing for in the next cycle, as well as giving our team some technical advice about how to continue to be successful in securing Climate Commitment Act dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, I will, I'll give two quick reports, which is that I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Subcommittee, Legislative Subcommittee, will be bringing back to ETP updated drafts of both a 2026 state legislative agenda focused on our east side transportation priorities, and then also a first, first time for this body, federal agenda, so that we'll be transmitting to our members of Congress. And so we'll be coming back to ETP with those recommendations, and gathered some feedback there. I also have been participating on the Sound Cities Association Legislative Committee, where they've been working both on a state legislative agenda, as well as, for the first time, a King County advocacy agenda, that is, kind of issues that the SCA wants to convey to King County and the leaders in King County. So I think I've tried to represent, in particular, our North Caucus cities within the SCA and the perspectives from Redmond and several of our neighboring jurisdictions in what are important priorities for us, and really reflects some of the things that show up in our legislative agenda, to make sure that those values are reflected in SCA's legislative agenda. We have agreed amongst the, those who represent different facets of the 38 cities in SCA on a draft to send to the Public Issues Committee. So I will look to our colleague, Councilmember Stewart, who's our representative on there, to be able to do some follow-up. We got to something I think we could generally agree on, and we did. I want to thank our staff, especially Amy Si, but also some of our sustainability staff and some of our planning staff also weighed in and got a couple of final comments that I think I'll be passing over to Councilmember Stewart to bring up, just from Redmond's perspective, when that goes to the PIC. But I do think that we were able to substantially get to a good outline on that. So we'll see how that goes. Also, it was really wonderful, this is not a committee, but it was really wonderful to be with many of our colleagues at Central Cultural Mexicanos Dia de los Muertos celebration, along with several other leaders, including our state Senator Vontenus Ladder. So thank you to them for inviting us to participate in that and to be able to support our community. And then I think that brings us to the end. Are there any other committee reports? All right, if not, then I will also see, is there any other comment from our council members? Councilmember Salahudin?
Thank you. So I prepared a few remarks. Hopefully, you can bear with me just for a few minutes. It's a really interesting feeling, knowing that these have been my past two years of Tuesday nights spent in, whether it's chambers or online, but I just want to give a few thanks. So first, a special thank you to Mayor Bernie and the entire mayor's office, as well as COO Files, Lisa Maher, and just for the partnership and a strong collaboration between council and the mayor's office. To the directors, staff, commission members, Director Laird, Cochran, Hamilton, Marshawn Burt, there's a lot to name. I just, hopefully, I don't forget anyone, but want to make my, express my deep appreciation for each and every one of you. The dedication that you show, coming into work, keeping our city running, and improving our city every day, is very inspiring to me. And I will say, I'd be hard-pressed to find a city, whether it's a neighboring city or a city in our region, that has the parks and trails, the public works, artwork, the technology systems, and human services investments that the city of Redmond has. So kudos to you. In my role as Presiding Officer of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, I especially want to thank Director Helen, Deputy Director Allen, Chief Shepard, Deputy Chiefs Kurakoni, Whitney and Despain, Chief Lowe, Deputy Chief Coats, and everyone else in police, fire, and planning, for playing such an important role in helping shape the work we've done together in Redmond. I also want to give a very special shout-out to Deidra, Cheryl, Chip, Amy, our city attorneys, now including Rebecca, for everything that you do to making our council experience run smoothly. And a special shout-out to Mr. David Morton, who has been here every other week for the past 22 months that I've been on council. I want to recognize the committees that I've had the privilege of serving on, One Redmond Foundation, Eastside Transportation Partnership, Community Facilities District, and the alternate on the PIC committee that Councilmember Stewart serves on. And finally, to my fellow council members, Council President Critzer, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmembers Fields, Anderson, Noeva Camina, and Stewart, working alongside each one of you has truly been a privilege. Whether it's in our meetings or out in community, I can truly say that, and out to, out to the listening public, our council truly does care about the city of Redmond. And, you know, whether it's in challenging times or in times that we've been able to come to a consensus, I've appreciated all of the moments that we've found common ground to move this city forward. And you've made me a better public servant, and I'm very grateful for that. And I'm really looking forward to the ongoing leadership that you will all show for the city. This has been an incredibly rewarding journey for me, whether jumping straight into the Plymouth Housing Project, just two weeks into council, to helping work on and pass the budget and the comprehensive plan, and supporting our behavioral health and alternative crisis response. There's been a lot of great work done. But one of my favorite moments on council that I would love to share was actually coordinating with my youngest brother's school in Redmond, when his class came to present on their vision of the future of our city. Seeing our youth imagining what Redmond could be and recognizing that we're helping lay the foundation of the future reminds me about the importance of this work. I will say that while my time on council is coming to a close right now, my service to communities will not stop here. As many know, in my other role as representative for the 48th Legislative District and the sole voice in the House for the city of Redmond, I will continue to make sure that the legislative priorities of our city are effectively represented in Olympia. And to actually touch on one of the issues that we've heard, not only in public comment today, but that we continue to hear in our communities, with ICE showing up in Redmond, in Washington, and across our country, we're working hard, and I'm working hard with my colleagues at the state level through legislation that can ensure the safety and well-being of our immigrant refugee neighbors. I'll just close by saying this, I grew up in Redmond. This has been my home for nearly my entire life, and this community is very, very near and dear to my heart. I've watched it grow from a small suburb to the vibrant city that it is today. So with the incredible work of my colleagues, our staff, and the community, I'm genuinely excited to continue calling Redmond home for the next 25 years and beyond as we move toward our shared vision of Redmond 2050. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Salahudin, it has been a true privilege to work with you, and I'm personally very proud to have you representing Redmond in the state legislature. So thank you so much. I did, I think we missed the clarification of, when, are you resigning from council?
Yeah, so officially, because I need to make sure that everything's off this computer, the day will be the 5th, I believe. So end of day on the 5th is when I'll turn in all my stuff, so I guess two days from now.
Great, so, and since Councilmember Salahudin will be resigning, I guess, first I'll just open it up, I said a bit of my heartfelt thank you to him for his service. If anyone else wanted to say anything, I'll just open it up. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Salahudin. We are going to miss you, but we will be in Olympia. I don't know if you heard, but January 20th, I believe, we'll be down, we'll be down to visit you. And thank you so much for representing Redmond and continuing to step up to even greater roles of leadership to represent our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you for your service. It's been rad.
Wonderful. Well, I, oh, did you want to say something, Council Vice President? Go ahead.
Thanks for being a fun colleague to work alongside with, and I look forward to working with you in Olympia when we come and visit. And we will be pushing you to do the things that we know that our community wants, and I hope you're ready for those conversations. And it's been fun to watch you grow, and I look forward to continuing watching you grow.
Thank you. So I will note for the listening public that next week, we will have an item on our study session to be able to discuss the process for filling the upcoming council vacancy, since this will be Councilmember Salahudin's last meeting. And so if you want to tune in, we will, the council will be discussing some recommendations that council leadership has discussed with staff, just kind of an outline to get something on paper for us to follow up on. But we'll be getting the council's input before we proceed on advertising for the position. But like, we'll be advertising soon for that position, and then we, the council does need to take action before February 1st, or by February 1st, on filling that vacancy, based on the date that Councilmember Salahudin has chosen. Councilmember Salahudin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't know whether council will be able to talk with prospective folks that would be filling this seat, but if any community member, just for the listening public, does have any questions and aren't able to talk to council members, I don't know whether or not they would be able to. I would love to be a resource, just if you have questions or would love to learn more about the process of being a council member.
Thank you so much. And yeah, so for the listening public, tune in next week for more discussion, and then hopefully, the council will be making some decisions on, just to, I do want to make sure the whole council is involved in defining the process, the questions we ask to applicants, et cetera. And the council will be getting information shortly on that, and then we'll be making that public, and then we will be sharing that out with the community, and definitely making sure there's ample time for community members to apply for that. making sure there's ample time for community members to apply for that vacancy, and be very clear about the process going forward, so that everyone can have the opportunity to apply for the chance to serve on our council. So, thank you again. If there's no other items, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. There's no unfinished business, there's no new business. The next item is an executive session, which is labor negotiations, under which we will hold this executive session under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 14 zero 4B. For 15 minutes, action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn at, we'll say, give it two minutes? We'll say 9:10. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting.